Yo, special treat! Study session, but not afternoon study session, we have a late night study session. And the reason why we have a late night study session is I'm a bit tired. One day at work and then I thought to open up PLO, my mind is not in perfect shape. Probably not a good idea, especially with PLO 50 which is a bit... Tough pull on running ones, so why go there? When mindset or the mental capacity is not the fullest. Let's skip PLO, let's study something. I've been looking about Aces that I need to improve my small blind preflop game, especially versus button opens and then when it's unopened, because that happens a lot, way too often then, I would think you would, or indeed a few years ago. So today we are focusing on small blind defense versus button open and then to unopened pots and then probably some squeezing ranges too. Let's see how far we can go. And as it's late night, we can have a few drinks while doing that. So, the thing is simple, we do have the chat poll. When we get people in, I know everyone is watching California Mini Challenge at the moment. I watched it for a while, feel was crossing, so I'm going to study. So when we do get more people in, we can fire up the poll, but before that, let's just see the situation. I use the Mastermind's new PLO trainer bucket tool, which is great. The situation is that button opens and as you can see there on the bottom, small blind versus button open, PLO 500, because the PLO 50 solver strategy is to call with 2% and pretty much three bet everything. And as we have a rate back, the actual rate is closer to PLO 500 than PLO 50 without the rate back. And at PLO 500 it's more like almost 10% call, almost 10% raise, so it's not the old school call 10%, 3% but 10% defend 20%. So it's closer to that and I think it's better. I mean if you only pay less than 15% of small blind to your way side, you could play that, but I think you're missing value on small stakes, because the opponents are not playing optimal. So you don't want to be too tight on small blind, but I use this one. I'd much rather have this 10-10 defense as old school players than 3bet 10% and fold everything else kind of approach. So I filter away pretty much all the aces and then I have some rainbow crap, but then I have a lot of other hands where there might be problem hands, some of them are quite simple. And we have three options, fold, call or raise. And it starts working, I mean... Don't expect me to know the answers, I suck at small blind defense. I probably defend way too much and this is a hand that I would very often on small stakes three bet to get a heads up and have huge fold equity on the flop. But I would assume Silver would call and it does and... These are so small that how can I make it bigger? No, it doesn't help anyway. So the boxes are quite small. Does anyone know how to make these boxes bigger? Because this doesn't do anything. So if there's any bucket tool Mastermind, let me know, because we can't really see the EV. Which sucks. Alright? So it's a call, it's still minus 0.3 BBs, which is probably not the case in real life. So 9885 double suited. I know a ton of people who would three bet this, I think it's a call. And it is, and once again minus 0.3 BBs. So it's not even profitable to play it, but we lose less than, folding we lose half a BB. Alright, Jack97, these are the problem hands. I mean it looks nice, it has connectivity, it's not total crap, but then it's one suit. I would probably call it, not sure what Silver would do. And Silver would call, but I hate that you don't see these EV numbers correctly. I mean you can see it, but you don't see them well. It sucks. But here's the thing, when you look at this, besides just the answer like 89% it's a call, important thing is that in solver strategy, what is the EV? Like here the EV is 0.4 - and 0.5 - so it's very close. So if you think that if I call, I play well, if I fold, it's a huge mistake. So it's not like that, the EV is almost the same. And in the end, there's lots more things that affect the overall EV of the hand than just your preflop hand selection. The opponent versus you, or you versus opponent. What's your skill edge? How much better player, if you're a better player than your opponent, the EV is going up on both. On folding, it's not, sorry. You can't increase our EV, but when you fold, even when you are a better player. But your calling EV goes up, your three bet EV, well not sure if that goes up, because it's crappy, but calling EV definitely goes up if you are a better player, because this is the EV versus exactly the same strategy. Exactly the same level player, so if you're a better player, your EV is better than minus 0.4. So always pay attention to what the EV is, so that tells you how big of a mistake it is to do something else. Ace 543, I've seen people three betting these hands. And I hate to three bet these hands, because if you hit two pairs, the opponent has more equity, whatever he has, than if he hits top two pairs. There could be overpair on the board, overcards on the board. And I have no idea if this is a call or pot. So I left my chances and no, it's not even close, because some of these hands are three bet. Which is a bit weird to me, but maybe we'll see. But this is always a call. And now the difference is 0.1 to minus half and 0.6, so it's quite similar. And at opposited connected ace high non-broadway, you can see that it's 52% times three bet. So a lot of these hands are a three bet. I don't know yet what is the difference maker. We can set it up, we can use this one. And here we have the bucket of double suited connected ace high non-broadway. So we can see that okay, we raised these double suited eight highs. And where do we have, here we still three bet a lot of, here starts to be like 50-50 between calling and raising. 654, 764. So 654s are still relatively, okay if we start to have double caps, it's not always three bet, even double suited. Yeah. Or it's really low, like this hand doesn't have gaps, it's 543. But we can see that... Well here is double caper. Yeah, these 55 highs are pretty much... But if it was 654, then we can see that overall it's going to be 6% three bet. So 543 called, 654, it becomes to be a decent frequency for three betting. So... I wasn't too far away, now I know where the threshold is, good session. King Jack9, oh boy. I would say they're not strong enough to three bet, too strong to fold. All we have to do is call, but it's 80% three bet and I hate to three bet these kind of hands. That's why I'm so needy. But once again, you can see that the frequency is 80-20. So if you just look at the frequency, you can say that, oh, you shouldn't, you should not always call. Clear three bet, but the EV is same, 0.1 with calling and with three betting. So assuming the opponent is at the same level as you are, the EV is same with calling or raising. So if you don't care about being super balanced or opponent cannot exploit you when he sees, "Oh, you don't ever three bet King Jack9", let's exploit that motherfucker. That doesn't happen. So like I would pretty much always call this hand. It doesn't really affect my win rate that much. So even there's a big difference in frequency, there isn't any difference in EV. So it's important to know the difference between those. Ace 876. Double suited three bet, single suited, this has to be a call. And it is. And quite clear one. Alright, Ace Queen Jack4, double suited broadway ace high with sort of dager. Well 4 is better than 6 or 7. Do we want to three bet these hands? If we call almost 10% three bet, almost 10%? Is this in the top half of our small blind defense range and I'm, I don't know. With the 4, I would pretty much like to call, but probably Silver would three bet and yeah. 100% three bet, so dager doesn't really change and for the bucket, double suited connected broadway hands, 99% three bet, so make my life easy. Double suited broadway hands, always three bet from small blind versus button. So this is the last misstep that we will have, but you can see the EV is still profitable. You make 50 BBs for 100 hands. So even if you call, it doesn't mean that you're going to lose a lot of money or you make a huge mistake, you still make money and probably in small stakes, you make more money than Silver would. Okay, King Queen Jack, double suited pair jacks with connectivity. I don't know, I hate to three bet double jack, I mean I hate to three bet pocket jacks. That might be from the Hold'em background. In Hold'em, you have three ways to play pocket jacks and every one of those is wrong. Silver makes a three bet, but we can see that even with calling, the EV is 1.6 compared to three betting, which is 2.0. So even with calling high EV, so as long as you're not folding, you're on the right trap. Double suited disconnected queens. I don't want to three bet this and it's definitely not a fold, so the only option is to call. Funny thing is that calling is minus 0.3 and three betting is minus 0.4 and folding is minus 0.5, so funny thing is that folding doesn't have, I mean calling doesn't have that much higher EV than folding. And when you get this hand, you're like, oh yeah, we can hand, it looks like stronger hands than we will have in PLO. So you're thrilled, you're happy to see the opposite queens. But EV vice, this is not a great hand. I mean it's marginal. And it's funny mixed strategy, some fold, some call, some raise. Pretty much always a call, but there's tiny portion where we fold the hand and tiny portions of it three bet, so I haven't seen many hands in solver strategy that the same hand is used for three betting and folding. I would say then in real life, don't start to fold the same hands that sometimes you three bet. You're just going to make a mess out of your game. Alright, hello guys, those who joined, if you want to use the poll in the chat for the hands, tell me no, so I will, I will just open it here if you want to use it. Because there wasn't too many when I started, so I don't want to have the empty poll there. 300 BB stacks, three bet any trash from position. Or Finnish dial, any stacks, any position, three bet any hand. This is 100 BBs deep, small blind versus button open and we're using PLO 500 frequencies. Because PLO 50 small blind frequencies are, they're too tight. That's the Swedish strategy for everything. 7754 versus button open, do we play these from the small blind? I would say, I'm quite sure it's a fold, but if you're slightly annoyed, slightly tilted, a bit frustrated, this becomes a powerhouse. And if you're calling from the small blind when you are a bit annoyed to unnamed nut raisings who took your money, you can see that the EV is same and now we do have people in the chat, "Does anyone know how to make these damn boxes bigger? How can I make it big so we can see the EV?" Because I don't know how to make them bigger, but it sucks that we only see half of the EV. It wasn't this before, I updated this bucket tool and now it's screwed. Probably going to take a screenshot so I can... So the creators, they had, there's a problem with it. Alright? So what I'm, no, 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 what I was about to say is that the EV of a fold is half a BB, of course, but the EV of a call is half a BB. So if you're kind of upset and then you call this hand, it's not going to ruin your bankroll. And most likely, if you are a better player, well if you're tilted, you are, you are not the better player, but if you are a lot better post flop than your opponent, then you might be able to squeeze this EV to be better than folding. So calling with this hand, I wouldn't say it's horrible if you are a better player post flop. Double suited double paired, Silver doesn't want to three bet these disconnected ones. If you fold this hand, I would come and do nasty things for you. Never fold double paired hands. And Silver is actually going to three bet at 17% of times and wow! Weird strategy once again, fold, call and raise. I mean same hand, sometimes we three bet, sometimes we fold, that doesn't make sense. Silver works in mysterious way, don't be a Silver. Don't start to randomize your action, like this is a hand that you can randomize, I can do anything. It's mixed strategy. I would say that make it, what would be the word, make it practical. These hands are call, alright. I love to three bet small stakes, but I've explained very often why I love to three bet those hands and make it a heads up, because that hand has more potential in three bet heads up pot than call multi-way pot. The 98 deuce, the deuce sucks. Make it weak or easy fold, make it stronger, we could start to touch the raise pot button. But what about, do we even call with this hand? And I actually wouldn't. Am I too tight? No, Silver is as tight as I am. Rainbow kings. Ew. Don't be Hold'em player, I would fold, but no. Oh, 13% of Silver agrees with me, but in majority, 87% wants to call, but the EV, I mean goddamn, three betting EV is still almost same as folding. I would say that when you three bet these hands, you're going to get into a lot of problems. But marginal call. I would say, this is a hand that, I mean Silver plays perfect post flop. That's the advantage over us mortals, we don't. Silver plays perfect post flop and it can get minus 0.4 BB EV when calling with this hand. I'm quite sure that most of us, if we call with this hand, the playability is so poor post flop, that we are going to probably either overplay it or overfold it very often. And both of those probably lower our EV, so the actual EV when we play King 87 Rainbow is probably more than 0.5. That's just my opinion, I don't know for sure. But I would say, no shame in folding. Well then we have, on a slightly better hand, we have a suited king. If we call the rainbow one, we're definitely going to call the one with the suit. So that was easy, easy. Ace Queen 77, once again three card hand. I have this good rule of thumb that I learned many, 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 many years ago when I was a young boy, that don't play three card hands out of position. But it's had suited ace and broadway. The overall bucket, connected ace high broadway, suited ace. 34, 39, 27. So you can say in the chat, "It's a mixed strategy" and you will be always right, but if we have to choose one, we try like that certain hand times, we have one action to make it manageable for our brains to play it that way. It's a hand where, if the opponent is good one, I probably, I know I'm too tight, but I would probably fold this decent amount of times, but if the opponent is bad, I can exploit him in some way, it could become a call. And we can see that calling is minus 0.4, folding minus half, so very close, it's not a great hand. Jack95, crappy hand, when you're slightly annoyed or you're bored, this becomes playable and oppositely run down and then when you are tilted, this becomes a premium three betting hand. So it depends on how much you have trained or how tilted you are. And... I mean, there's a lot of things that make this hand bad. We have suited jack 10 instead of jack high hard straw and then high spade straw, which would increase the power of the components or the strength of the components a little and we have 5 his totally used as dager. And as Real Deal For Rio says, that it's a call on three bet versus this in position, we are in the small blind, so we are out of position, this is versus button open. So we don't, I would just fold this hand. And Silver would too, but the funny thing is that the EV is same and three betting is not even that super horrible, but... I mean... In the hand component, if you can see more things than within the hand instead of strengthening it, it probably isn't a great hand. Same kind of hand, now it's more coordinated, queen 865, double suited problem hand in PLO. Will hit almost any flop, never flops the nuts. Let's see the bucket. Double suited connected reload with the broadway kicker, so these type of hands are 73% of times fold and only 6% call and 20% raise. Wow. These are kind of hands that, if someone asked me, "How do you play this broadway kicker with three connected cards and double suited from small blind?", my estimations wouldn't be anywhere near close here. I would probably just call, never three bet unless it's an ace. And I'm actually interested to see, well this is, no it's, oh, these are, I was just about to ask, what other hands we three bet on this category? And I was sure that it's going to be the high suits, but queen 865 is goddamn always raise pot. The EV is almost the same with everything, so it's very marginal three bet. And the problem is, one thing, I'm going to get my KICAS computer tomorrow with a lot of memory. And the problem is that I'm going to work on the Saturday evening, so I can probably start to see if I can use Monker on the next week. I'm interested to see that if we node lock, that opponent never folds to three bet in position, which is very accurate on small stakes, like button opens, we three bet, button is not folding anything, then what happens to these type of hands? Because I'm quite sure that if button doesn't fold to three bets, these hands are not three bets. Because some of the EV comes from button folding. And button should fold decent amount of hands actually from his weak range. I mean Silver estimates pretty decent fold, let me see if I can find... Where do I have? Fold versus three bet, button versus small blind, three bet, it's 17, that's probably a bit old, but it's 15 to 20, somewhere in that range. Has to fold 15, 20, or Silver assumes it's going to fold 15, 20% of his range, so big portion of the EV comes from the fold equity. And if you don't have that fold equity, I'm quite sure that when we hit those preflop ranges from the Monker in Monter 2, where no one folds to three bets, these three betting ranges will tighten up more. Tighten up quite a lot. Interesting hand. King Jack9, this is a hand I would much rather three bet. Yep. Not even close to anything else. What about pocket pairs? How connected it has to be to be a three bet? Wow. Ace high pairs with broadway card, three bet 90% of times. And call only 10% of times. What are the hands that we're going to call? Pocket deuces and that's it. Oh, sorry. Pocket deuces, deuces, pocket sixes. And then, wow. And even if we have a pair of deuces, we still raise all the ace, king, ace, queen. So ace, jack, deuce, deuce, ace, ten, deuce, deuce are some of the only calls. Wow. These are the hands that, as neat as I have been, I would just call. These are the hands that, as neat as I have been, I would just call. Ace, jack, eight, six, really rapid hand. And the bucket, single suited, connected ace high non-Broadway, even suited to ace, fold 75%. We have three of the same suit. Let's just fold. Not a great hand. Single suited kings, is this enough to tree bet? Some connectivity, some double or triple capers in the hand. Isn't enough? The bucket doesn't treat but too much of single suited kings and queens, only 30%, so is this in the top 30% of single suited kings or queens? I would say that it's not. But solver says it is. The EV is 0.6 and 0.7. So not a huge difference. So one of those hands that even if you call, you're going to make a lot of money. So whether you call, whether you tree bet, is profitable. So if you call with these hands, don't worry, you're not too far away from making a lot of money. Versus some opponents, you can actually win more by just calling. Queen eight seven five, double suited. We had queen eight, six, five, which was a tree bet. This has to be a tree bet too. What? Does anyone remember, was the hand queen eight six five that we have just, oh, I had to check it. Where are we now? The hand was queen eight six five, double suited. And it was 94% tree bet. So six five, we changed to seven five, so we have one higher card. And now this becomes 100% fold. Where's the logic in that? Now someone help me. Why? Well, I thought it left a screen shot and asked from someone who's wiser than me. Because I fail to see the logic in here. And if we have any solver superminds on the chat, now it's time to say something, why queen eight seven five, double suited, is 100% fold? And not even close, I mean, the EV is 0.9. And queen eight six five, double suited, becomes a clear tree bet. And Real Deal For Real says that we are not blocking certain hands, yeah, but I mean, we changed the six to seven. Nine six five, yeah, but it was a queen eight six five, so the only difference is on the other hand, it was seven, I mean, in this hand, it's seven, on the other hand, it's the same hand with the six. So that's what I'm wondering. We just change one card, one higher, and it goes from the other opposite of almost 100% tree bet to 100% fold. And the EV is not even, I mean, tree bet in this hand, the EV is 0.9, tree bet in the other hand was EV 0.4, if I remember. So there's a half applied difference, which is huge, 50 BB per 100. And I don't understand why. Why the difference between seven and six is so huge? I would get it if the difference was just in frequencies, that solver has to fold some hands to gain some kind of balance or something, but the EV should be then very close on the other hand. I don't understand why the EV changes so dramatically. But I hope someone can answer that, at least later, if not now. Super weird. Ace, jack, ten, ten, single suited. And yeah, Real Deal For Real says that I have to understand that solver is not the bible, but guideline that you have to put in practical context. Yeah, that's what I've always been saying, it's not the bible. But for some reason, solver calculates huge difference in EV. And that's what I'm trying to understand, why the EV drops so dramatically when we change six to seven or seven to six? Yeah, the idea, solver is a strategy versus another solver strategy. But solver has certain things it does, and if you can figure out why it does, what's the logic? Because solver is not a random program, it has logic for something. And if you can understand the logic, then you can think, how do I apply this logic? Should I apply this logic? So that's... And when I don't see the logic, it's really hard to implement that strategy. And that's why I'm so curious. Alright, 99% tree bet. But calling almost the same EV. Don't mind if you call. A rapid ace high. Oh, this is a Turkish rap. It will have a straight draw on any board. Powerhouse. It's like the old poker books that said that ace, king offsuit is better than ace, king suited, because ace, king offsuit can make two different flushes. It has a chance to make two different flushes, while suited hand can only make one type of flush. I would fold this crap. And so does solver, but once again, the idea for calling is not horrible. Ace, queen, five, four. Two holding hands, but double suited, five, four, plays with ace, I would definitely call. Soler, oh, solver tree bets. Wow. EV is quite same, but I have to say that if someone, if I open button and someone tree bet ace, queen, five, four, suited to five, four, I would probably mark him as too aggressive. So criticism, I'm learning. That's the most important thing. As I said, I suck at small blind. I tree bet way too little. Wow, ace, queen, five, four. Right, ace, king, king, six. Three flops or three of a suit, downer, is it enough to tree bet? I don't know yet. I have to randomize. But one of those hands, if it was stronger, it would become easy tree bet, if it was weaker, it would become easy call. But with the ace, I'm going to say it's a tree bet, and no, it's not. But the EV is so close that because the button is call happy, who doesn't fold crappy hands, the EV goes over. Interesting to see when I do get those calculations for not folding to tree bets. So when opponent has never folded to tree bets in position, or actually out of position either, in PLO then, no one folds to tree bet. Then what happens to these kind of hands, because my thinking is that when opponent doesn't fold to tree bet, these hands gain value. The EV for tree betting goes up. Oh, this software, oh, it's free if you're Mastermind member, so if you're on the Mastermind course, it's free. As long as it's in the beta testing mode. So to get access to it, you have to join Mastermind. You can find the link there below the stream, and at some point, it becomes it becomes, becomes full version, and even in Mastermind, you have to play something. So I would say that if opponent doesn't want to tree bet, then his calling range has a lot of those crappy hands, poker pairs, then missed the flop often, just some weak hands. And then these type of hands gain value. So I would think that in the scenario where button never folds to your tree bet, this one goes more than one. King, king, queen, six. Let me see. King, queen, six, single suited. Oh, it's not, oh, this is ace high bucket. So it has to be on the other bucket. Let's see when we have single suited kings. I would say that it's a call. Single suited kings without the ace are quite often a call, if I remember right. Queen, queen, eight, four. We just had double suited queens, and that was queen, queen, eight, three, which was quite mixed strategy, and the EV was quite close between folding, calling, and tree betting. I mean, let me see, queen, queen, eight, three. It's a 2% call, I mean, fold 84% call and 14% tree bet, so queen, queen, eight, three, you could do anything. And just say it's a mixed strategy. I would say this is a call too. No. Now it becomes tree bet 97. Queen, queen, eight, three, was 84% call. So once again, we change from three to four, and the strategy changes completely. And the thing is that most of us cannot memorize everything. Because if you want to implement like good solver strategy, then there's so much to memorize. Queen, queen, eight, three, call, queen, queen, eight, four, tree bet, queen, queen, eight, five, I have no idea. So you have to make shortcuts. And double suited queens. So if we have double suited queens, then it's 92% of tree bet. So there's only 7% that we call, queen, queen, eight, three was one of the only ones. So the hands we call are queen, queen, eight, duse, queen, queen, six, duse, three, duse, queen, three, seven, three. So if you want to have some kind of memorizing aids, then double suited queens, if he has three or duse, you call, otherwise you tree bet. I would say, make your life easy, double suited queens, tree bet everything. Because even with the queen, queen, eight, three, the EV between calling and tree betting was very, very similar. So it's quite the same. So make your life easy. Do what Timmy Win says. Double suited queens, make a tree bet. Move on. Oh, I hate these hands. Nine high rundown with a cap, double suited. In the old school PLO, this is a tree bet to isolation. We want to play head support, which makes sense. And solver doesn't give a fuck about old straws. But is it good enough to tree bet? The bucket says double suited rundown, he's 74% open. And as this doesn't have Broadway cards, it's not the low part. So the working logic says raised pot. And it's true, but the EV is same as call, minus 0.2. Alright, rainbow poker tens. I hope no one wanted to tree bet. Ace, king, jack, duse. I wouldn't play this even or at least on this mobile, never, ever, ever. And yeah, but calling doesn't have horrible EV. Ace, seven, six, five. I know now what to do with this hand. I didn't know half an hour ago. Or I think I know, it might be that solver says catch ya, but if I remember anything from the last half an hour, this is a tree bet. And it is a tree bet, and 100%. Only the smallest one, it was ace, five, four, three, that was a call, and pretty much everything else is a tree bet. Okay, small rundown. Now we know the bucket was single suited rundown. What did we have earlier? It was nine high rundown, and it was quite often tree bet, and now this is very often a fold. Seven high, I would fold. But EV of a call is same. Alright, ace, jack, ten, nine, good enough to tree bet, or not? I would say that these are the types of hands where the bit blind should have a huge impact on your decision making. If the bit blind is a player that you don't want to play against in out of position, let's say he's a decent rep, then tree betting becomes a much better choice. But if the bit blind is your target player, you don't want to scare him away. Two and a half bet. Yeah. In live game, you grab the pile of chips and you're like making a tree bet and see what the bit blind is doing. And then decide whether you just call. But these are the hands that you should think about, because it's a strong hand, you make money no matter how you play. That's the thing to understand. These type of hands, no matter, as long as you're not folding, no matter how you play, you're going to make a lot of money. So the question should be more, do we want the bit blind to be part of the pot? If he's a call happy player, we want to dominate him, or do we want to push him out? We don't want to play with him. Soler says it's a tree bet, but in reality, think about the bit blind. Almost the same hand, but without the fourth card. Single suited ace, jack, ten. I would say it's still a call. Because it has potential. But it's not, it's too crappy even for solver. I overvalued suited ace with three Broadways. Silly me. Why is this here? This is just pure crap. We skip that one. Jack, jack, seven, seven, call on tree bet versus button. What say you? This is call. Oh, there's more people, we can open up the poll when we start to do the squeezing part. Oh, mixed strategy. I would probably tree bet because there's Broadway card. And solver tree bet 78% of times too. So it's pretty much all except poker tens. I would say when we have Broadway cards, solver wants to tree bet too. Those ten, ten, six, six, ten, ten, five, fives, it wouldn't, but Broadway cards or connectivity, even solver tree bets, these ones. Oh, crappy queens. My reaction is insta-fold. And it is. Problem hand, my good old rule of thumb, don't play three card hands out of position. I hope solver knows that rule of thumb too. And it is a fold. King, jack, duse, duse, I wouldn't play. Would any one of you play, or would someone tree bet? It was funny, we had this. I can't remember what was the situation that we had the quiz on of the bucket tool, and it was something like this, and Jayne just came to the stream, and his first comment was tree bet, and everyone laughed. And then the strategy had 1% or 2% tree betting frequency, which turned out this one, and it was so insane that he actually thought it sort of right. I wouldn't call. I mean, this is crap. But it's 82% call. I'm too tight. Soler plays more hands. Bad me. Queen, jack, ten, eight. I wouldn't tree bet, we can never fold, we have only one option, which is to call. Double suited queens. This is easy. Timmy said it. Around ten minutes ago. Double suited queens, always tree bet, bam. Uh, king, check, ten, nine, suited to check. Uh, this should be easy call. Would anyone disagree with that one? Well, solver does. So, solver does, but the EV is same. So EV wise, calling is fine, but oh, 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 boy, I need a drink, just a second. Oh, boy. Solver disagrees with me, that wouldn't be a first place. Ace, seven, four, deuce. Uh, now it's not connected that much. Is this a tree bet still? I have no idea. I would say mixed with the calling and tree betting because I don't know which one to press, but if I had to press I would press call because it's disconnected and small cards. But it's hundred percent fold, so I was overvaluing double bear, so when it's not connected, it becomes a fold. And then if it's ace, six, five, four, it becomes hundred percent tree bet. So huge difference if there's some caps or not. Poor me. Ace, ten, nine, deuce. Hand looks nice, but it's not, that's not a super strong hand. And the bucket says disconnected ace high with a Broadway card is very mixed. I would say that this hand is the bottom of those because it's only then it's not king, queen or check. I would fold this one. No. No. It's five percent tree bet. Oh, my God. Wouldn't cross my mind to tree bet this hand versus button. But once again, if the button is not folding the tree bets, I don't think this is a tree betting hand because these more crappier hands rely a bit on the fold equity. So I'm, I'm very interested to see what happens to the frequencies. Um, rainbow kings, you. Um, ace, queen, five, four. Would anyone play this hand? Ninety-five percent fold on this category. But this isn't the five percent that we call. Oh, fuck me. Rapid ace high hands, we fold almost everything and these exact hand is what we call. I would say that just folded. Ace, check, eight, seven. Not suited to ace. What say you? I say call, you say nothing. Or then we have a delay. But someone says fold. It's right. Oh, Isaac, we have three more. Rainbow, check, spot with ace, king. Um, these are one of the hands that uh, was a reason because I, I had these type of hands when I was playing and I was wondering that I have no idea whether to call these versus button open or not. And rainbow ace high Broadway pair. Sixty-two thirty-eight, so sixty-fourty between folding and calling. So with Broadway pair, poker checks has to be in the folding range. No, it's in the calling range. Let's see the bucket. So we fold checks with four. Wow, ace, king, check, check. So we pretty much fold. Let's see where the calling borderline is, pretty much most kings. There's the huge jump. So checks we call. And very disconnected ones. Okay. King, ten, ten, four. I would be amazed if this was something else than calling. And solver doesn't amaze me this time. Uh, senior suited checks, one of the problem hands, I would just fold this one. I mean, poker checks, socks, whatever you do with them. Disconnected. And it was a fold. Alright. How did I do? Oh, thirty-two out of fifty. I got over half, right? Yay. So, um, what should we do next? Because I'm planning to do when it's unopened, small blind versus button, what hands to open? And then squeeze. Uh, let's say lose, uh, card off and button. Card of open button call, what is our squeezing range there versus two loose positions? So which one should we do first? What would you say? Uh, let's add some. Well, let's keep the same buckets. So, um, does anyone have any preferences? Do we do small blind, RFI or the squeezing ranges? And as no one says anything, then let's do the squeezing ranges and let's do the poll. So fold call a raise. And uh, let's do here. So small blind versus card of and blah, blah, blah. Card of open button calls and then what if we do on the small blind? And probably just a second. And now I pressed the wrong button. Oh, no, 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 no. Don't start to load anything. I don't know what I did, but whatever it is, I don't want to see. That's too complicated for me. So, uh, now we're squeezing, so now we can take away some of the rainbow. Okay, ace high Broadway. Okay, that's fine. Well, let's keep the same ones. They are not that horrible. So now we have to change the change the situation. So it's small blind versus card of and button. I mean, there it's nice. And where is our trainer tool? There it is. Alright, uh, let's start the poll. Let's use this one. So now you can say from the chat, just one, two or three, what would solver do? Fold call a raise. Ten, nine, eight, seven. So the situation is PLO five hundred ranges, card of open button calls, we are on the small blind. Do we squeeze or not? And I have to say that out of all the people here at the moment, I suck the most in squeezing ranges because I don't like to squeeze. It's not squeeze in small states. In small states, it's let's play two, pick three way, but where I am out of position, no one folds anything. No one gets squeezed. It's like card of and button are true when we tree bet. So I have no idea what the treatment ranges are. I hope that after these fifty hands, I, I know a bit more, so I'm not the biggest fish in squeezing. And hello, Razem. So Timmy says it's a raise, it's the only one who was brave enough to vote and it is hundred percent raise, so easy raise with this type of hand. Nine, nine, eight, eight. I don't know what's over. I know what I would do. Uh, I would call for sure. I wouldn't tree bet because it's move away, but I would definitely call. Oh. My, my poll game is not GTO. And it is a call. Alright. Ace, seven, seven, six. I would just probably fold because I don't know what to do, but how valuable are these in, in solver mind? And let me see. Double suited ace high, middle pairs is fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, so very mixed strategy. When it's strong enough to raise, when it's not. Um, I would not fold it because the seven and six are connected. But it's tree bet. But EV of a call is same, zero point one. So we, we give a minor recognition for the chat. Well, sevens and fives, kind of nine and eights, now it suited with the cap. I agree with the tweet chat, I would definitely call two. And that was easy one. Oh, Timmy, don't change. My rule of thumb is that in small states, never fold double bear hand. If you want the good rule of thumb, how to play double bear hands, just don't fold them. Everything else is okay. Never, never fold double bear hands. That's my advice. Yeah, there are situations where you could fold, but if you want one advice, it's never fold them. Ace, king, ten, ten. We, i- i- if solver squeeze is this, it's weird. Double suited, uh, this is PLO five hundred. Because PLO fifty's mobile strategy is fold everything. That makes a bit boring studies and then I think it's not the optimal strategy and the level of competition is not super high. Razem, oh, you have inside information. Damn, let's, let's see. Senior suited ace high Broadway pair, suited ace fifty-three percent raise pot. Oh, my God. Uh, ace, king, check, check would be a tree bet. What about ace, king, ten, ten? Oh, and, and the chat is fifty-fifty. Someone say something. Someone say two or three in the chat now. No, nothing happens. Okay, it's calling a mixed strategy. No, it's not mixed. It's hundred percent tree bet. Oh, Razem, you had inside information. Well played, well played. Well, tell me this, check, ten, ten, nine. Fold call a raise. Timmy would raise. I, I would say that it's a call. Too good to fold, but to tree bet this hand. I mean, oh, my God. Um, the funny thing is that overall strategy is a call four point four percent and raise seven point seven. And versus button open, it was raised nine point something if I remember right. So we are tree betting here, raising almost as much as versus button. So that might give you some guidelines. But everyone says raise. He's Twitch chat, right? No, it's a call. Guys, what are you doing? And the difference is huge. Tree betting is minus one point two. Um, ace, queen, ten, seven, three card hand. Oh, Twitch chat makes mistakes. Never seen that happen. Um, two bet is rule of thumb, don't play three card hands out of position, has been very effective so far. Or then I have a biased memory, but I would fold. Oh, I wouldn't fold. Three Broadway cards. But solver would fold. Oh, should have, I should trust my own rule of thumbs. Three card hands fold out of position. God damn it. Uh, queen, seven, five, three. The hands that forty minutes ago, I was laughing that they are crappy hands and then suddenly they, they become tree betting. And then when I learned that they are tree betting hands, they become folding hands and I didn't see any logic. And then I saw that if there's a lot of caps, it's an easy fold, but now it's seven, five, three with the double cap. I would say that it's a fold. And Twitch chat says it's a fold. And solver says it is a fold. So nice that everyone agrees. Just a second, I will open the poll. Here we are. Ace, queen, nineteen, rapid ace high, but suited to ace. And the overall, how to play the bucket of senior suited disconnected ace high with one Broadway card, it's fold ninety-nine percent. So there's one percent that we call. And now everyone in the chat says two. If you get the, I mean, if you get it right, um, I think there's a delay, you didn't see this one, but I will say if this hand is that one percent calling, in that one percent calling range, if, if this hand has any frequency in calling and you two got it right, Razem and Timmy, then, um, I'm, I'm going to raffle uh, Melkoma, Kreda, Kep, B Melkoma Kreda player and cap between you two. We do a heads up raffle right now if this hand has any frequency in calling. Damn, sorry guys. That would have been sweet. King check then 8. Triple cap. You don't see, you don't actually hear that often on the streams or anywhere, that we have this triple cap rundown. Nice. Oh, it's not nice, if you hit the queen 97, you would have a decent draw. Quick question, if the flop is queen 97, how many outs you have for the straight? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Um, the answer is easy. 3 of all of these and 4 up and 4 down. 20. Maximum rap, 20 outer. That's half of the deck. And, oh, the, oh, oh, Timmy and Razm, we, we need a third one. Now wake up people, we need a third one to give us the answers. I, I wouldn't squeeze. Wow. Wow, who saw this coming? 92% fold. Calling is... What? I mean, calling has better EV than folding, but still Silver wants to fold it. Probably if it calls, it's not balanced, so it has to fold some 0.4 negative hand, so it's just balancing purposes, but... The EV says call. So we give a virtual point to Timmy. That should be a call. Oh, rapid. Why do we have this? It's not even suited to ace. We skip that one. We, we skip that one. Oh, we have a few minute delay, so let's wait for a minute. And now the poll started. Uh, don't vote before you see the poll, or you, you can, like Timmy, you can press the 3 again. Don't worry. You can only vote for once, no matter how many times you try, so if you think you missed the poll, just do it again. Treat with ace then 84. Wow. Come on guys. Oh, 30 second error because of the same. Can you use FCR? I don't actually know, let me try. No. It doesn't work. But what if I change for the next one that is just forward call or raise, but everyone says raise, okay. Let's raise. Uh, let's try. Okay, let's try a new thing. So. Razm says fold. And now let me try if now, Timmy says fold, and if I type F now... It doesn't make it, so it has to be a number down. So it's not super intelligent, Paul. Yeah, it is a fold. That was easy. Ace 653, damn. Oh, this is in the middle. I mean, versus button, 654 is a treat, but 543 is a fold. 653, no idea. But what about squeezing? Do we really want to squeeze these aces and three low cards? Because it sounds so weird. Uh, I have to cheat. 30, 16, 54, oh god damn it. I say it's a fold. My bold prediction, it is a fold. I got 7% right. I got 7% right. Oh, sorry, forgot to open the poll. It wasn't, it's call. Ace 996. Cheat mode. Half of these pocket pairs we fold. And then 25 call, 25 treat, but is this in the top quarter of pocket pairs, non-Broadway pocket pairs? Well, it's high, it's connected. I, I think that Razm has a point there for treat betting. But Silver doesn't agree, there's a 5% treat betting frequency and a 6% folding frequency, so same hand, forward call or raise. You can do whatever you want. Okay, senior suited rapid ace, is it good enough to call? And I'm out of drink. And 50/50, oh, Timmy and Razm, you are the only ones who are active. We, we need a third player for, for the poll. So everyone who's lurking there, someone step up, we need a third one, because everyone is 50/50, and I have no idea. And it's 100% fold, not even close. We definitely need a third opinion. Ace 10 then 9. Have you paid attention today? Uh, okay, Vila, thank you, we have the third one. It's a raise pot. 100%. Thank you. I don't speak Chinese, well, you're doing fine anyway. Uh, Dappo suited Kings without an ace with somewhat rapid side cards. Wh- why do we do this with this on the small blind? Timmy says 2 and 1/2. I don't know if that's a 2 and typo or, or 2 and 1/2. And 22. And double call. Oh lord. Um, the bucket says 89% raise pot. So I would say, make your life easy, Dappo suited Kings and Queens, always treat it. And this is in that category. Silver beat Twitch chat. What about that? Alright, uh, King high. I mean, we had, versus button open, this would be a treat, but I learned that today, so it's, it's a good, good session. Might open up a second one. Second drink for that from my new refrigerator. So versus button, it's a treat, but is it treat but versus squeezing? And what do we have? 2 folds, 1 raise. Okay? Twitch chat has spoken, it's a fold. Uh, I have a feeling that it's definitely not a fold. No, it is, it's a raise pot. Boom. It is a raise pot. Uh, Queen Queen then 3. Senior suited Queens. Fold, fold, oh, fold, 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 everyone folds, I would call probably, but I'm, I'm a fish on small blind. But here's an encouraging fact for other small blind fishes. I play very different, differently from Silver's strategy, from the small blind, but still my win rates on the small blind are quite decent. It's like minus... Uh, what was it? Minus 15 or minus 20 or something like that. So it's decent win rate from small blind. And I play very differently from Silver's strategy, so... Even when you don't play Silver's strategy, it doesn't mean that your results will be bad. It just might be a problem if you go a bit higher in stakes, PL50 and above, where people can't exploit your unbalanced small blind frequencies or strategies, then it might be a problem, but if you play on PL25 all over, then if your win rate from small blind is decent, you shouldn't panic. But twatch, twatch, Twitch chat, well, we can say that it's a twatch. Twatch say it's a fold, Silver says it's a fold. Everyone agrees. 9887. If you're a bit frustrated or bored, this becomes a nice rundown with set probability. Timmy folds, Razm says 2, 2 out of 3. And we have a 1 call, so we have a tie. I, I would fold. I mean, the hand has more downside than upside. But Silver would call. Damn Silver. Alright. Oh, that's a crappy one. Let's keep that one. Hope you didn't see it. 8774. We have a small delay, so you might saw, oh, everyone is folding. I, I hope those are for the previous hands. Oh, the crappy hand, I don't know why that was there, that bucket shouldn't be there. But 8774, I don't know now if the votes are for the, for this one, but I wouldn't mind folding this one, it, it sucks in multi-way pots. And it is a fold. Alright, 9854. Rundown with double caps, which means that we need a 67 on the flop to make a straight draw, but if we do hit the 67, the good thing is that we have 20 outer rap. So potentially, we, we could hit almost 30 outer draw with back doors. So if the flop is 67 aces, we are crossing pocket aces. And Timmy would treat it. Razm would fold and Vila would treat it. What? I would never treat with this hand, I'm, I mean... If we treat it, it's going to be a three-way pot almost always. And this hand sucks three ways. But I don't know if Silver treats it. But it's 2 to 1 for fold. Alright. You were right, 100% fold. Wow. You guys are killing it tonight. Queens and fours. Do we squeeze or not? Oh, you can, Timmy, treat. No problem. And then flop the miracle 998. Uh, everyone would just call, okay, this is, everyone agrees on calling. But 10%, that's about my size. 10% would treat it. But treat base, even I wouldn't treat with this hand. I would just call and see the flop for sure. What do we have? 28 more. Alright. Suited to ace with the queens. I have no idea how, how valuable this hand is in Silver's strategy. And Cardiff Giant, welcome. Alright. Ace Queen Queen 6. Couple of treat bets, 1 caller. And treat, everyone says treat bets. I would just call, but let's follow twatch. Twatch was wrong. And it's quite a bit difference. 0.4 BB difference to calling, so it is a call. Shorty twatch. Ace then 10, it was double suited, if I remember right. Or have I missed something? Let me see the previous hands. Ace then 10, it was double suited, ace then the 9. And Ace King then 10 was double su- I mean, raised, because it had ace and king. So those are when we raised ace then 10. And twatch says call. I, I wouldn't mind treat betting. Wha- wow. Senior suited connected ace high Broadway suited ace is a fold 79% of times. What the fu- I'm not going to say the bad word. What? I mean, look at those numbers. Senior suited connected ace high Broadway, which means that in all the hands, there are suited aces and at least 3 Broadway cards, and the fourth one is connected, and it's 79% fold, what sorcery is this? And look at the hand, oh, okay, uh, 3 of a suit is a fold. Okay, so it has all the 3 suited hands, but ace, king, then 3 is a fold, so all the three card hands are, okay. So it has all of those, uh, disconnected hands too. So we can see that when we get to the 8, it becomes a call, okay. I thought the fourth card has to have connectivity with the three others, but it has these ace Queen then fours, which are folds, okay. So this is a call. I misunderstood the bucket. Ace check, deuce, deuce. I would fold. Don't play poker deuces. It's that easy. Wow. And then we have treat betters, we have callers, we have, we have everything. Now we need the fourth one who says drop your pants and show your ass to the table and throw the shoe to the pot. Where's that option? We should have the fourth option. Drop your pants and throw your shoe. Okay, Cardiff Giant. Tip the scale to calling. And he's right, 90%. But 10% agrees with me. That's a bad hand. Ace 654, senior suited. Cheat mode. Connected ace high on Broadway, almost always fold. And Timmy says 3 and 1. What? Cardiff's turn 2 and 1, you can just pick 1. Alright, um... You can see the bucket, that 1% is a raise pot. So let's do the same thing, if this, if this hand is in that 1% for some weird reason, that has any frequency in treat betting, then we will raffle a cap right away with everyone. We will do a more speed raffle if this hand is ever a treat bet. And no, it's not. But it's 88% call. So who was the lone caller? Cardiff Giant, who then changed his mind, Razam said two. But for some reason that chat, I don't know if you can change your vote actually. No, you can't, I don't know why. Something funny going on in there. Ace, queen, three, three, double suited. Like ace, jack, deuce, deuce, but slightly better. But would it be any difference? And twatch says call. What? There is a difference. There is a difference. Ace, jack, deuce, deuce, clear call. Ace, queen, three, three, solver wants to three bet. So solver hates poker deuces, loves poker trees. Kaboom. Who's the only one who isn't raised? Oh, Razam. You're crossing it. Uh, king, queen, jack, then. Single suited. Squeeze or no squeeze? Yeah, it's here in, in betta mode. Alright, three to one. Let's squeeze those. No. What? Two percent of times you should fold this hand and one percent of times you can three bet. And ninety-seven, it's, it's call and, and the EV difference is quite huge for calling. So we don't squeeze that one. And the bucket overall, we don't squeeze pretty much. King, jack, then nine is, is squeezed sometimes. And, um, the two percent of folding, uh, I might be wrong. I have to say that I haven't explored solver. I'm probably one of those who has done the least solver work. But I have a feeling that solver wants to have exact balance in his frequencies. So let's say on the flop, he wants to call exact number of hands. He wants to call with exact frequency, so he has an exact folding frequen- 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 frequency. So then there are hands that would be a call, but if he calls hundred percent, it's going to be too much. Then the calling frequency would be slightly too much, so he needs to down a little. But I would assume that solver would be hands where folding, calling and raising would have similar EV, because, because here, the EV of a call is zero point one. And EV of a fold is zero point, minus zero point five. So the difference is zero point six BBs, which is kind of huge. It, it's sixty BB per hundred for your win rate with this hand. So. So the problem is that I don't understand why this hand, why not have the frequency divided on those hands where every action is zero point five negative? And then just put the frequency so it adds up. That I would understand, because one, once again, this is another situation where I just can't find the logic in solver logic and it's very confusing. Because then, then it's hard to use the information. And I, I'm not sure if anyone can explain it in, in in depth. People say that one might cause it, but the problem is solver can't tell why in the world it gave two percent folding frequency for this hand. Alright. Kings and nines. Squeeze or no squeeze? And two to one, three to one for squeezing. Alright, let's squeeze it. Yep. Easy squeeze. Well, a bit harder. Ace, king, five, not suited to ace. What do we do with this hand? Cut off open, button calls, we are on the small blind. Um, probably folding is out of line. But do we call or do we raise? And I, I would go for calling, suited ace, I would probably raise. But twatch is tied to calling or raising. Then I choose calling. And fuck me. Huge difference in EV, so suited king. Uh, I think the ace blocker has a huge impact there. Yeah, don't worry, and stay for casino. Steel season deuces is double suited. Soler hates poker deuces. And we have a fold and we have caller. I would never fold. Remember guys, don't fold double paired hands. Old school rule of thumps. Last twenty hands. Crappy chaps, but suited. Do we enter three-way pot? Oh, we have insta folders. Oh, eighty-four percent of chaps and then single suited are folds. So this has to be on the folding range then. Yep. Wow. Rainbow kings, but not the horrible ones. Ah, what to do? Let's use the cheat mode. The bucket for rainbow kings and queens is ninety percent fold and ten percent call. Oh, it's not a three bet. Oh, I, I, I don't think solver three bets any non-ace's hand that is rainbow. But kings and queens, rainbow, only ten percent call, but is this in the top ten percent? It's hard to be any better, king, queen, jack maybe. So, uh, I would say it's a call and it is. Ten eight eight six. Seems crappy. But is it enough to peel the flop? Everyone folds, alright. Let's fold. You're right. No problem. Double suited rundown. I know that there are tons of players who three bet this hand. And I don't know if I want to be one of those. And now we have folders, we have three betters. The bucket itself is six percent fold and thirty-two percent three bet, wow. So it's very polarized to calling or raising. Connected near Broadway. Even with that cheat sheet, I have no idea if this is a fold or a raise. So twatch says it's a fold. Twatch is wrong, it's raise pot. Uh, so what are the folds on this bucket? King, then eight, five is a fold, king, then eight, seven is a three bet. So yeah, with sixes and fives or lower. It's a fold. But king, queen, then. It's a fold. Oh. Alright. Didn't find any easy logic there, so let's move on. Oh, triple kings, this is a fold. So let's move on to this one. Ace, king, queen, jack, suited to ace, squeeze or no squeeze? And we have three squeezers. I'll be the fourth one. And that was easy part. Ace, queen, nine, eight. Top cap and double middle cap, but double suited, but not double suited to ace and queen. So once again, couple of things that hurt the hand. So the easy way of thinking is we have few things that weaken the hand. It's not as strong as it might seem in the first glance. And everyone says call. I agree. But solver says fuck you guys, I'm going to squeeze. And it's fifty-four percent, double suited connected ace high, non-Broadway. Wow, oh, I pressed one button, sorry. Ace, then eight, four. And the bucket itself is pretty much two out of three times folding and one out of three times three betting. What does twatch say? Fold, fold, raise. Three folds, one raise, wow. It is a fold. But the EV of a call is same as folding and, and the EV of three bet is not well, it's minus zero point three worse, but not super horrible. One percent of raise. So if you raise it, someone says that's a fold, you can say that, one percent. One percent. This was my one percent. Okay, last then. Single suited kings. Um, it's a call versus button open. So why would it change versus cut off and button? That's what I'm thinking. I don't know if solver agrees with that logic. So twatch says call, solver says call. Nice. Rainbow kings, but now there's the ace. And now the question is, do we raise? And rainbow ace high Broadway bears, eight percent of those are raising hands. So now the question is, what of those rainbow ace high Broadway bears are going to be a raise pot? And I would say they are ace, king, king, queen, ace, king, king, jack type of hands. And these ace, king, king craps are fold or calls. And now the pool is tied. So we go for call, which is right. And it's twenty percent fold, raise. So, um, let's actually see. Oh, I always forget to remove this one. What are the raise pot hands? And yeah, ace, king, king and Broadway cards. Ace, king, king, four, ace, king, king. Like ace, king, king, five is eighty-three percent raise, ace, king, king, four drops to twenty. So quite close. Alright. Truck and finish monster, double suited rundown with set potential. What should we do? There's folding, there's calling. I would probably call and see the flop. And so does solver. Alright, eight more, eight more. Ooh. Nice. Double suited, double paired, and one of the bears is Broadway. Call or raise? And two callers, no razors. Oh, guys. No razors. Okay. Oh, Elmer, thank you. You saved, and now we have more razors. Tababua. Humanity still has hope, but Twitch chat says call. Soler says hundred percent raise. I, I think very often double suited, if there's a Broadway bear, it's going to be a three bet. Very often. Uh, suited kings, not the king, but queen then, which makes it connected. The bucket itself is forty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so anything close. Is this in the top third of single suited kings? Um, I would say it is. And Twitch chat is anonymous. It's hundred percent raise. Great job, six more hands or five more. Oh, ace, jack, then nine, this should be a no-prainer. Oh, this should be easy. Yeah, put those trees on the board. Boom. Yeah, in no limit PL, I mean, no limit Omaha, NLO, you could shove it. Alright, ace, queen, check nine. What about this one? The bucket says ninety-three percent fold, which was the single suited connected ace high Broadway, unsuited ace. Ninety-three percent fold. So twatch says, Twitch chat says call, I, I would say fold. But it's semi-connected, so let's go with the chat. And it's hundred percent fold. And the hand looks quite nice, I mean, if you get this on the small blind, it gets your attention. If you're playing six tables, then there are hands that don't get your attention, you see, it's crappy hand, no matter, matter what position I am in. If you get ace, queen, check nine, with suited check nine on the small blind, it will get your attention. But it's, it's a fold. A rainbow chaps. The ace always makes it a bit more interesting. And the eight is somewhat connected. But everyone says fold, um, I would fold too. And it is a fold. Oh, that was the last one. Alright, um, we've got one thing to do. Um, I got twenty-eight out of forty-eight right. Just above half. So. So I, I could only, I could only almost half of that right with you guys. Let's do, uh, one thing, let's do a one giveaway. We need more caps to the world. So we're going to do one more spit. Didn't want to advertise it too much because then there would be a lot of people just for the giveaway. But all of you who have joined, you get reward. And let me see if I can find a picture, so. And let me see if I can find a picture, so you know what you're going to get. Alright, you're going to get... You are going to get a cap. I'm not sure if it's like this, it might be all black with a little more curve. Or if you prefer the flat one, just let me know if you win it. Either one is fine for me, but you will get MOGA, make Omaha credit cap. The new trend in lockdown isolation. And it was a program, it's a... I think now, it was a bucket tool, now it's PLO trainer beta. So... So you get it if you join Mastermind. Oh, the cap is sauna-proof. It just might change a little bit. Yeah, it's sauna-proof. So Bucket Tool is just a way to see Silver outcomes. So it's a tool that shows you Silver simulations and calculations. You get the exact same results probably with PLO matrix or whatever. It just makes it easy, because you can select the strength buckets. Which is awesome. I'm going to show you here. Like, now we are, we were practicing versus cut-off and button calls. And I don't have to do with all hands, I can choose these strength buckets. So if I say that I have problem in that spot when I have those double suited medium pairs, I can just choose the buckets that has those hand strengths and practice with those. So you can sort of narrow down what you're practicing. Pre-flop or post-flop. So it's a great tool to see certain spots. Really awesome. And Ali Dood, you just came for the giveaway. So we're going to keep one of those MOGA caps. If you don't want one of those, then don't join. Don't join the giveaway, we're going to do the mosh pit. Because mosh pit is fucking insane, and Tababua is following, thank you. So, um... Let me open up. Where's my mosh pit? Where's my mosh pit? There's my mosh pit. And let's get the mosh pit running. So what's going to happen is you can join by command dance. There will be an announcement in the chat when it starts, so you just type exclamation mark and dance. And that's it. And then comes the mosh pit, and the last one standing wins the cap. And while they are moshing, you can use the command battle. Exclamation mark and battle, it draws a random battle, battle to the mosh pit and knocks someone out. You might knock yourself, it's so random, but you can throw battles. So if you're ready to mosh, you can win make Omaha credit cap delivered to your home by me by joining. But understand that if you win, you have to give your name, address, and phone number to me, so I can make the order. So if you don't want to share your information with me, don't join. So only if you're wanting to keep the cap and you can give the information to me, then join. Someone wins the cap. Let's fucking go. So now type "dance" on the chat. And when first one dives, then the counter starts. God damn it, without the space. And if no one wants to join, then we're going to close the goddamn giveaway, and I will go to home. So we need someone. No one wants a cap! God damn it! Now we have 1 minute, so are we going to have a heads-up? I mean, the problem is if Tababua wins, we have to do again. So if someone wins who doesn't want the cap, we're going to do it again. Because it's sometimes hard to see who was the second. So 30 seconds. You're going to win a cap that says make Omaha credit again. So what do we have? We have four-way, and Tababua is there. Oh my god. Don't win! Don't win! You can mosh there along your laptop or phone. Oh, who went down? And Tababua is there with Timmy. And Timmy wins. Congratulations, Timmy. You won the cap. Uh, we don't do a second round. Enough moshing for one day. So Timmy, just send me your information with either Whispering or Skype, and I will send that cap to you. Um, that's a study session. As I said earlier, if you didn't want to play, wasn't a bit tired, so much rather have few drinks, and I don't know about you guys, but I learned some about small blind. I learned some about small blind strategy. I think that when I play tomorrow, I can definitely play better with some of the problem hands I had, so it's great. Oh, I don't hear you at the moment, and I don't even see, because I have only 2 screens, which is going to change tomorrow, because tomorrow I get my 255, uh, 56GB of RAM computer with 3 monitors set up. So I'm going to do a bit of cleaning here, so I can fit all the 3 screens and my refrigerator and everything. So I'm going to redo my streaming setup for tomorrow, and then I will have 3 screens. God damn it, it's going to be awesome. Because every time when I stream, I wish I had a third one. The streaming stuff is in one, then I have the streaming software on one, and then I would like to have the third one for everything else. And I'm waiting. I was supposed to get it today, but the poster service didn't want to deliver. They didn't do anything for the package, so I hope it comes tomorrow. So it will be set up, but I'm going to work for the rest of the week. If I get really motivated, I might do a study session tomorrow on the afternoon. Focus more on the small blind, because today we didn't do any small blind versus big blind, which happens a bit too often in my mind. In few years ago, it didn't happen almost ever. Now, like on PLO 50, running once, you get a lot of small blind versus big blinds in the session. So probably should focus on those ones too. But hey, thanks everyone! Congratulations, Timmy. Nice mosh pit. That's the March. I will see you on April. Have a good night. Bye-bye.